Sorry, can we call the roll?
Agent. Clegg.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Sanchez.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
Woodings.
Here.
I have present one absent.
Thank you. Um, first up, we have a Eric is not here. Okay, um, we've got interim budget changes.
Sorry for the lack of notice on a different presenter. So Travis Black with the Budget Office.
Oh, no, no, I was I wasn't sure until I saw you if we were going to have to just push it to the end. So oh, thanks for being here.
Eric Standen is at least on time today. Just as you can see from the handout in front of you, there's four IBCs today. I'll run through them quickly. And if there's any questions, feel free to ask follow up. So the first one is just to move human resources, security funding from the library. And the existing dollars from the library into the human resources department where the invoices are actually being paid. So it's not changing the overall budget. It's just reallocating where the funds are sitting. The second one is for a new sorter at the downtown library. This has been a contemplated project for years. It was almost in last year's annual budget and was ultimately pushed and is now going coming through as one of our enterprise portfolio projects. This would just add a sorter to the library that would allow staff to spend less time returning books to shelves and do some of the at least bulk sorting upfront. So it's just individual bins that can be taken up to their different areas rather than having to go through each and every single book for all the departments. And that's $280,000 that would be funded by the enterprise portfolio fund and the capital here, I'm sorry, in the operating contingency account. The third one is there at the Morris Hill Cemetery. There's currently a one columbaria and or one columbaria wall, and they want to extend that to get three more, which is their long term plan. And the reason to get all three now, rather than just the one incremental one that they need is having granite that matches. So they're already going to have issues matching the existing granite wall that's there. And this would just allow three more to be ordered that will all at least those three would all match. And although this is net coming out of capital fund balance, at least 50,000 of it, that's not covered by the Heritage Fund. Ultimately, the city is made whole when these the niches in these columbaria are actually sold. So it's out of pocket today, but ultimately will be cost neutral to the city over time. And then finally, there is in this year's in the 23 proposed budget, there was $700,000 to for Primrose Park, which was the new park that we is out on Gary Lane and the old fire station site. This funding would effectively accelerate 450 of that funding from 23 into 22. That would allow just with supply chains as they are, it allows a lot of things to be ordered now so we can actually encumber the funds and actually be able to have the park ready to go sooner rather than later as opposed to not being able to start doing anything into into October. Assuming that the 23 proposed budget is adopted, this and and that this IBC is approved. In 23, we would bring a subsequent IBC to reduce the funding in 23. So it would ultimately be remain a $700,000 project. This is effectively just moving 450 of that impact fee funded project, by the way, into 22. And then we reduce it on the back end again. So the project would remain constant. It's just a matter of timing of the funding. And so I apologize that I kind of rifled through those, but if there's any questions or follow up happy to answer.
Madam Mayor, one quick question on the mazelim walls, the the money is coming from the Heritage Fund. So as we're paid back, will it pay back the Heritage Fund or will it go into the parks budget?
I'll have to get back to you on that definitively, but I believe that the way it works is it's just it just goes into the parks operating budget, I believe, is where the proceeds from those go, but I'll have to confirm that.
Because I know the Heritage Fund is is I think at least part of it is donation funded for specific projects. So I just don't want to short it at some point.
Oh, oh, that I can answer for you. So the funds that are coming from the Heritage Fund are either unallocated or interest earnings that don't have specific allocations associated with it.
Okay.
So in other words, there's no money that needs to be returned to the Heritage Fund. It's it's all city funds.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's all I needed. With that, Madam Mayor, I would move we approve the interim budget changes of July 12, 2022 as presented.
Second, give a motion in second. Can we call the roll? Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Next up, we have a looks like first we've got Josh Wilson. And I don't. And then we've I see Mr. Howell as well. Hi, Ken. Are you? Are you presenting also on this topic? Or are you here for? Great. Okay, great. Um, we'll start with Josh, and this is a presentation on 718 18th Street. And it's in accordance with an ordinance or permit. See, I'm trying to wing it by not looking at my notes. But I remember I was on council, I think, or when we approved this. And so it's you've come back to give us an update in accordance with the request at council.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is a slightly unique item before you tonight. In 2018, a facade easement was approved for the Union Block Building on Idaho Street between 8th and Capitol. And as part of that facade easement, there was a requirement placed on the application with the associated work that is going to take place with that, that they come back to a city council work session for approval of the glass block pavers that were going to be placed in the sidewalk. And I'll go into some details and demonstrations about what that means, but they are required to come back tonight. We have physical samples here. If anybody want you got a fun little prop, if anybody wants to touch it, but kind of a just a quick refresher. So the Union Union Block Building, of course, again, on the north side of Idaho, between 8th and Capitol, certainly a well known building on the National Register and a local landmark. So the applicant, when they came through the for the facades that back in 2017, proposed some subterranean work to the basement. They were increasing the basement floor heights, floor to ceiling heights, and creating a kind of unique sick situation along Idaho Street with a window well that would add daylight to that basement space. So in plan view, they would add a spiral staircase in front of the building, some glass block pavers within the sidewalk, about three foot six in width that would provide some light into into that basement through a well with a excavated wall that would allow that in. So again, the requirement placed on that was for the applicant to come back tonight. There was some uncertainty back in 2017 about what the treatment of those pavers would be. If it would be some kind of combination of solid block, transparent block. The applicant has proposed a transparent block. Certainly, it you cannot see detail through it. They are investigating some surface treatment in terms of etching, some chemical or or mechanical etching to give some some surface grip to it.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to speak to that. I actually have block like this where I live. And I think over time it became edged. And then the property owner did some upgrades, including power washing the block. It is clear now.
Okay.
And so, yes, the etching is an excellent idea. Just wanted to for someone who lives with what glass block, it's transparent now.
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate that. So there is a and I'll bring this up, but there is a ridge on the edge of this. We'll provide some additional traction as well. But the again, the applicant is looking into some surface treatments. And he's here for questions, anything he could add. But with that, I think I would stand for any questions the council has.
Madam Mayor. If I'm remembering correctly, the reason we asked this to come back was to ensure that as this treatment was put in that the the surface was both not slip slippery and that the structure of it was such that you, you know, wouldn't break through. And so the etching, I think, takes care of the slippery. I guess the the structure around this will be what to hold hold those blocks in place.
Madam Mayor, Council President Clegg, I think I would defer to the applicant to provide some details on that.
And Ken, if I'm remembering incorrectly, you can you can correct me, but that's what I remembered.
Up to the. And if you'll come on up to the mic, that'd be great.
So my name is Ken Howell and address is 817 West Franklin Street. And and I love your question because, of course, I've been doing a lot of thinking about that. How are we going to support these glass blocks? And so, yeah, I'm now debating with myself as to what I'm thinking about, but I'll just blurt it out. But let me tell you what the what the fallback position is. It's simply a piece of steel, which is an inverted key. So the spine of the key would go in between the blocks and then the bottom would hold the edges. That's the easy traditional solution. But I suppose a month or six weeks ago, I thought about the idea of the fact that this is this glass is very tough, yet will not crush without more than 1,000 pounds per square inch pressure. And it's three inches deep. So I thought, can we make a truss out of these glass blocks? And so, working with my structural engineer, the span is six feet roughly. And he said, yes, you can, if you find the right glue to hold the blocks in place. Okay, so now I've been looking at all kinds of glues and it's a huge, big, multi worldwide industry that is growing like crazy. And I don't know if this has actually happened at this point, but next time you're flying in the plane and looking out at the wing, there's a very good chance it's going to be glued on and not riveted. And because the clues are extremely adhesive. And they don't the rivets, excuse me, the pressure to the to them. And it makes sense to have a uniform connection. So I'm not finished with that research and will you'll all be relieved. And I'm relieved too that the building department isn't going to allow me to go forth without without some independent testing. And so we'll do that if necessary. But anyway, there's two solutions.
Thank you. That, yeah, I think answers my question.
Anything further?
Have one question. I think that since we since we looked at this application, we've done a lot around ADA accessibility and making sure that all of our surfaces downtown are accessible. And I'm curious if any additional work's been done on that. That was, I think, if I'm remembering in 2018 was kind of my my biggest set of questions was around how this impacts accessibility. So there any?
Sorry, Commissioner Williams, I'm not hearing all that you're asking me.
I'm sorry, I'm on a new microphone, so maybe I'm not doing a good enough job. Just as far as surface treatment and accessibility by folks who might use a service animal or a cane or, you know, might otherwise need predictability is a big piece of accessibility. So I'm curious how this surface will kind of interact or has it been run by our accessibility committee or anything like that?
Understand the question now. No, it's going to be a seamless translation transition between the brick pavers and the glass block. So there'll be no edges or curves or steps or anything.
And as far as the surface goes, because this glass block that we're seeing has a ridge around it. Will that, I mean, are people's canes hitting it? Is is that going to be a problem? I'm, I guess.
Yeah, I don't. Well, first of all, yes, I don't. I don't think so. One of the reasons that I'm attracted to using glass blocks is, of course, it's been used in sidewalks for generations. I mean, it goes back nearly 100 years. And so that was one of the reasons. Now, this small edge, I mean, I guess you have the glass block up there. You can kind of see that, yes, it would give some feedback, I suppose, to somebody using a cane, but it certainly isn't going to interfere, I don't believe.
Okay, and in the, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, in the long time that these have been used, because I don't think it's a treatment that we currently have anywhere in Boise, which is why all the questions. There hasn't been any concern with the ADA community or anything like that with the surface treatment. Do we know the answer to that? You can say, no, I don't know the answer, and that's fine.
Again, my hearing aids amplify everything except your voice. So just one more time, please.
In the long time that we've been that folks have been using glass blocks as a surface treatment for sidewalks, has there been any concern by the accessibility community over the glass block treatment?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, just to amplify the pro temps concerns, which I think are quite valid. Is there? Is there a possibility for us to make sure that that happens? I know that, you know, one of our art pieces in one of the tunnels, I think, was very vibrant. Lots of movement in terms of the design and, you know, I learned from a constituent that folks who have epilepsy, that type of condition that that can be triggering. And these are things that unless you have that, it's hard to see that or or take that in. And so I'm just wondering if there's a possibility for us to have that question answered by the community itself.
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, members of council. So there are standards in ADA about in terms of deviations in surface and what's allowable. I won't quote what it is, but it's either a quarter inch or a half inch. It's somewhere in that range. We'll make sure that the building department as part of the review takes a look at that. We'll confirm that it does comply with ADA standards for that vertical deviation.
Great. Thank you. That answers my question. I appreciate council member Sanchez helping to come up with a solution to that.
Anything further for Josh?
So Josh, as I understand it, you need us to vote approval for use of this glass block in this treatment.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I believe the condition is specific enough that this requires council approval that the motion would accomplish that, correct?
Okay, with that, then I move approval of the use of the glass block as presented for DRH 1700571 at 718 West Idaho Street in the Union Block.
Would the maker of a most of the motion entertain a a change to the motion? And that's that.
There's no motion technically yet.
There's no second.
So instead of us, there could be another.
Yeah.
There's no.
I will entertain a change.
I'll say, actually, that motion dies for lack of second.
Okay.
So that it can be reconfigured now.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'll make an attempt here that we approve DRH 17-571, the approval of glass block used for a walking surface in the public right of way associated with the Union Block Building, pending review and approval by the building department of ADA compliance.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Any discussion?
I'm I'm fine with motion. I don't think it's required because that is part of all of our review.
I just wanted it to be very clear.
Okay.
Yep.
Right. Further discussion? All right. Can we call the roll?
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And next up, we've got Tim Keen. Pause a second. Oh, God. Now, we've got Tim Keen with us to discuss the updates to the zoning code rewrite.
Mayor, members of council, I'm here to give you an update on the zoning code rewrite, which has been in process for quite some time as we're about to begin some additional public meetings. So we wanted to present to you where we stand with our recommendations that we'll be making in public starting this week. This here is the agenda for our open houses that begin on Thursday this week. We have three of them scheduled over the next two weeks to review new versions of modules one and two, which I'll get into in a minute. Talk about our next steps in the process. We'll have time for Q and A at each of these open houses. And then we will have some time for breakout into groups to talk about specific issues in more detail. With regard to our timeline on the zoning rewrite, as you know, this kicked off in late 2020. The public meetings and discussion around what have been called modules one and two, which have to do with the zoning districts in the city and how uses are permitted. That's module one and module two being the design specific standards within the ordinance. Those public meetings concluded in the spring. So since April, we've been working on significant adjustments to modules one and two, which I'll review with you tonight. And we'll then go out and have these public meetings over the next couple of of weeks such that we can get feedback, hear what the community is thinking about the shifts that we've made and be prepared to move into module three such that we can stay on schedule and seek to get the zoning ordinance completed by next summer. A summary of major themes that came through the public process around modules one and two. You know, the concerns related to a generic approach to the application of these regulations across the city such that it was somewhat of a one size fits all approach to how we deal with our neighborhoods. That was a theme that was expressed in a variety of ways. Also that we needed to somehow calibrate the regulations such that they're sensitive to the infrastructure that we have in the city and our ability to grow such that we're not extending ourselves and requiring additional infrastructure that would be difficult to pay for. Urgency around issues that are so important to this council and to this community related to affordability of housing, affordability in general, and the use of sustainable practices in an environment of needing to obviously adapt to climate change and then managing the growth that we are having and being protective of the edge of the city as we continue to grow such that we avoid the mistakes of other cities. So in in considering those things, the team that's working on this came up with these themes for how we actually go about adjustments to modules one and two as we prepare to go back and speak to the community about this. So the team being the the planning team and the Department of Planning and Development Services led by Jessica Zilag, and then the zoning team Andrea Tuning, Lena Walker, Deanna Dupree, and then Lindsay Moser from Community Engagement, who've all been working pretty furiously on this to respond to the ideas that came from the public process and seek to prepare something that we feel is a compelling alternative to where we were headed before, that we hope you'll be compelled by as well. And the community will see that we've listened and adjusted such that there's a lot here that they can get excited about. So I will start to go through those changes. So one is related to this variety of neighborhoods question. Acknowledging that we have neighborhoods that have relatively low density and large lots. We have many suburban neighborhoods. We have traditional, single family and mixed housing neighborhoods. We've got compact neighborhoods and we have urban ones. So recognizing that what part of what makes Boise what it is, is that we have this variety, and that's not something to work against. It's actually something that should help frame how we create a new ordinance. As a reminder to everybody, the ordinance we have dates to the 1960s. So it's likely there was a clear idea in the 1960s that as to what we were trying to achieve as a city with these regulations now is our opportunity to present a whole new package of regulations that relate very directly and clearly to what we now think is important to the city in terms of how it grows over the next 10, 20, 30 years. And and so, you know, respecting the physical characteristics that we have needs to be central to this. And so a variety of neighborhoods. And in association with that, this chart here shows some changes from where we were headed before in modules one and two, and also some changes to way to the way the ordinance works today. So the headlines here as it relates to the changes that we made coming out of modules one and two are that we you'll probably remember previously had proposed to consolidate the single family zones from three consolidate the three into two and then change the minimum watt sizes within what would be the two that resulted from that and and make them more similar. And so one thing we're doing is saying, no, we shouldn't do that. We should stick with the three and keep the three single family districts that we have today and maintain the density requirements that we've got in the current ordinance with some exceptions that I'll speak to. Then we also tied increases in density to affordability and and sustainability requirements. So again, another common theme was if we're giving away density to through this ordinance rewrite, but we're not tying that directly to affordability and sustainable practices, then we can't be sure that we'll get them in this development. We will have given away the density. And yet we won't have confirmed that we'll get what the public wants in response to that density in the process. And this chart also shows in bold here some revisions, a variety of things that you can see here in each of the zones, but keeping the single family zones that we have, and that includes the R2 and R3 districts, which do require a greater variety of housing types. I'm going to transition now to outside the neighborhoods into the kind of mixed use zones. The earlier versions of the proposal that came out of modules one and two and were discussed in the public didn't really have clear differentiations between where mixed use zones would be applied. So we have corrected that in this version. And here's the things that we have done as it relates to the mixed use zones. So we really want the mixed use zones to be applied strategically so that we're addressing the potential of downtown that we're addressing the changes that are happening and the investment that's going on on State Street that we acknowledge we've got some corridors in the city that are different than others, where we have our best transit service, for instance, that being State Vista and Fairview, that we now have our pathways plan and corridors in the city that really are intended to be about mobility in ways other than driving. And then we've got this dates to the blueprint Boise, the Identification of Regional and Community Activity Center. So the point here is to get very specific about these places in the city and design mixed use zones that are commensurate with what we're trying to achieve in these denser places in the city, going back to where we were headed before. It was a much more blanket approach to the whole city. There's there's one technique here that we'll use in the previous mixed use zones will will make everything dense. So in this case, we're trying to be, as I said, particular about it as it relates to the physical characteristics of the city. So first, as it relates to downtown, importantly, extending the downtown district, which would now be called MX five and converting where we we have very suburban zoning still in the downtown area, these commercial districts. in the downtown area, these commercial districts, you see them there, C2, C3, C4, and RO, which are remnants of a suburban era in the footprint of downtown, converting those as well into this MX five, and essentially putting in place the zoning that's needed in downtown Boise to further the development of Boise and its ability to handle a significant amount of the city's growth within that footprint. So that is part of this. The second piece is along the State Street corridor, identifying those locations where transit oriented developments have been designated, specific locations, there's four of them for a zone called MX four, where technically we would not have a density or height limitation. However, should I come back to this part? There might be another slide about this that gets into the detail. I will come back to this, but it, this, the, the point is that this MX four district is really for these four locations on State Street, which are different than other places in the city, because this is where we want our densest development that's tied directly to the transit that we're seeking to invest in in Boise. So the MX four would apply to only those areas. The next version is the MX three, which is a district where we limit its application to those transit cord, those, those, I'm sorry, streets in the city where we have the best transit service that again is, is State Street outside those TOD locations, and then Fairview and Vista. So in these streets, what we're proposing is MX three, which would be up to 60 feet in height, it would, this is envisioning, you know, denser, single denser mixed use residences and so forth, up to 60 feet. So these are the streets where we really concentrate on designed such that people can walk and get to transit, and it's, it's a more urban condition. So that would apply to those corridors as well as these activity centers. So this would include, for instance, the Boise mall area is within one of those activity centers. So the MX three applies in these locations. Then, as it relates to the MX three that we're proposing for Fairview State and Vista, we're also suggesting that on the backside of those properties, fronting those streets, that to be respectful of the adjoining neighborhoods, we rezone the part that's adjacent to the frontage on those streets to be R2. The purpose of this is along these few corridors where we'd have denser, taller buildings, rather than going right to single family, that we would have a little bit of transition there, like a half a block, where you would step down to an R2, which again is, is residential, of course, more in keeping with the scale of a single family neighborhood, and then you would transition into the single family. So along State, Fairview, and Vista, you'd have the MX three right on the corridor, right behind it, you'd have this conversion to R2, and then you would go back into the neighborhood. So, so that's a new aspect of this proposal that we're presenting now. Then we have MX two, which is conventional commercial uses that are more auto oriented. So this is the places where you would have your single story commercial and drive through and so forth, acknowledging that of course we'll continue to have commercial development that's more conventional and auto oriented in its design. So that's in the MX two. And then MX one is the neighborhood scale. I see we still have our nice photograph of this location on the bench, but the MX one is a neighborhood scale mixed use, so shorter buildings, you know, not dense, not as dense as you have in those corridors, but again, intended to be more pedestrian design in the middle of a neighborhood. There's good examples in several parts of Boise that are like this. So that's the MX one. Back to the affordability and sustainability requirements, this relates to several aspects of the proposal we'll be presenting over the next couple of weeks. So the first piece of it goes back to the single family zones. And as I said before, the concern being before we were giving away additional density without any commitment to affordability or sustainable practices. So we're adjusting that requirement to say that if you do go above what you're already permitted in the city of Boise, the two units that you get, in order to go above that, you have to meet these requirements. So you have to designate units for affordability, and you have to meet these sustainable practices thresholds in order to get that additional density. So that's one piece in this ordinance. A second is, we were looking for a way to more, I call it surgically, permit small apartment buildings, cottage courts, density within single family zones by establishing some criteria within the ordinance that addresses the concerns that we heard in modules one and two. Again, in modules one and two, we were proposing just to apply the density across the whole area. So a change now is to say, no, let's try to take what we learn from one and two and design an aspect of the ordinance that allows for these surgical opportunities for infill of a little bit greater variety of housing types, which we have so many of in Boise. So I'll go through that now. So what this proposes to do, and it says in the R1B and R1C zones, if you meet these location criteria, this is available to you. So this is where you start. So the location criteria is that you're within the 300 feet of a collector or minor arterial. So within a block of a collector road or minor arterial, in those types of streets, the collector and the minor arterial are established by the road plan, I guess that ACHD really controls, right? So they, it's been designated, what is a collector and what is a minor arterial, as well as a local street and all those things. But if you're one of those two, or you're within a quarter mile of a property zone MX three. So if you're within a quarter mile of those few corridors where we've got the best transit, then this is available to you as well. So those are the only locations where this is available. Then, and again, back to the, all the discussion we've had in Boise over the past, you know, year at least, let's tie these things to the infrastructure, you know, not just spread it across the city. Let's be precise about it and put it where people don't have to drive all the time, which is near transit and on our, our more main streets where we have other uses and all those kinds of things. Walking is more of an option for more people. So once you get past those location criteria, you get into the site characteristics. So the lot has to be at least 55 feet in width. This next one has to do with, again, a concern that we heard a lot of, which is we don't want to do anything that might compel people to do away with existing structures, you know. We don't want to, through the ordinance, encourage the demolition of existing structures or the demolition of naturally occurring affordable housing and all that kind of stuff. So this one says that you have to be a vacant lot, or a lot where the improvement structure value is no greater than 25%. The reason for that was to say, if the property's really in bad shape, then okay, it's okay to, 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 to replace the bill, the structure that's there, or that you incorporate the existing structure in what you do. So if you do, if it's any of those cases, if it's a vacant lot, if it's a building that's in very poor condition, or if you incorporate the existing structure into what you do on the property, then you can do this. The last piece is that you don't have an approved demolition permit in the last three years, because again, we don't want to encourage the demolition of existing structures. On the map there, you see in yellow, the properties in the city that are single family zoned, or that are, I'm sorry, R1B or R1C, that meet those locational criteria. So those are the properties that are zoned R1B or R1C, and are within 300 feet of a collector or minor arterial, or within a quarter mile of the property zone MX three. That's in yellow on this map. Doesn't determine what, we're not identifying what's vacant and that kind of thing. That's just the locational criteria. And you can see it's very well distributed around the city geographically. So if you meet those criteria, and this is available to you, then you get up to four units by right on those properties. Congratulations. If you want to go higher than four units, you can go five to eight, provided one of those units is designated for affordability at 80% or less of AMI, and you get a parking reduction of 50%. So if you go above four to eight, you, you, you can do that, provided one is designated and you get the 50% reduction. If you go above eight, you can go to 12, if two of the units are designated for affordability, and you get that, that 50% parking reduction. So again, the effort here is to tie these things that we want to increases in density, and to be more careful about how we apply these opportunities in the city such that we're addressing the concerns that everybody has around access to transit. Do not encourage demolition of existing structures, all that kind of stuff. So that is a new proposal that is in this ordinance as well. And these are just some examples of, you know, there's many, we could have many, many, many slides of examples throughout Boise of where you've got some variety of what is really kind of single family type housing within single family neighborhoods, but it's, you know, a duplex, it's a quadruplex, it's a small apartment building, it's a cottage court, and it provides an amazing opportunity for a variety of people to live in these neighborhoods. So that proposal that I just reviewed is for that purpose. So that was the second piece. And then the third piece of this new proposal that relates to achieving the things that we want in the city is related to the mixed use zones. So this is a parking reduction in cases where you're providing affordability and you're using those sustainable practices. So this would apply to the MX three and the MX four. So that would be along, those are along State Vista and Fairview, also those activity centers. So if in, in those locations, these, these, the parking reduction in this case would be available to you if you're doing the affordability, affordability piece of it. I think I have one more. Okay, I need to talk about it here. So the one other part of this is that in that MX four, which is along State Street, those four TOD locations, transit oriented development locations. In those cases, as I mentioned earlier, there really isn't a density cap or height limitation. However, there is, if you don't do the affordability piece. So in the MX four even along State in those four locations, you are limited to 60 feet. You can only go above that in cases where you're, that you're providing 25% of the units are affordable for people at 60% or below for 50 years. So, so again, tying the density to the affordability and sustainable practices that the city's been making a priority. And then the last piece of this is related to managing growth at the edge of the city. We are proposing this new overlay, which the wildland urban interface you see here within the kind of tan color, which is, you know, we've, we've had some, some requirements in various city codes related to the sensitivity of these locations that are prone to wildfire and are places where we have that more interaction than other places with wildlife, and creating an overlay that, that is in the zoning ordinance that includes a variety of requirements related to how you responsibly design and build in these locations is, is proposed in this ordinance. And then looking at creating an open land, series of open land, districts that include one that would be for properties that are intended for conservation, not for any particular use. So we are proposing a, a collection of these open space or open land districts that would be included here. So the last one here is revise annexation policies, which I'll get into in the next slide. But before I transition to that, it might be good to stop and answer questions if you have any.
First, Tim, thank you. And for all the folks who've been working on this, thank you. It's, takes a lot of energy to listen. It takes even more energy to be open minded and to change your mind and to kind of redo some stuff. I had one question, and it was sort of like this weird hypothetical that was going on in my head when I looked at the maps along the active corridors. And we were really proud of our, our best in class routes that we have with VRT, but I think that we wish that there were more best in class routes on VRT. And I always think about Overland as an example. And in my head, I was thinking, well, if we had a best in class route on Overland right now, which is probably needed, if the funding was there to do it, would that really change the way that our maps look? Or do you feel like this is still kind of would incorporate things like that in the future?
Yeah, it's a very, very good point, one that we've been discussing and, and, and talked about whether Overland and Broadway would be included in the MX three as well. And the, we decided at this time not to include them. I will say, however, along Overland and Broadway, we have activity centers, which would, where the MX three would apply. So there are, as you move along those streets, you get to these places where it kind of comes together at an intersection. So we have proposed some activity centers along both of those streets. But the other part of the answer is that we would envision that the MX three zone would be available for other streets, provided, you know, the transit, we make that investment in transit along those, along those streets. So, so it's quite possible that we would transition over time on Overland and Broadway to more of a consistent MX three designation. But I think it's a good thing to discuss, you know, in this process. Where should we apply the MX three? What, what do you think? What does the community think about that? That's the thought process we had.
Thanks, Tim. Certainly more questions, but I know we've got a limited time, so I'll kind of leave it there for now.
Yeah, I'm thinking, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Tim. This is a huge change. And so I just have a, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, when we first kind of went into this process, the thought was, is that we would go to a more form based code. This seems like we're not doing that anymore. And I would just like to kind of explore the reasoning and the thought process behind that.
Well, you know, there's a couple of answers to that. One, as I would, I would challenge the idea that we were headed in a real form based direction. I mean, when you talk about form based codes in this country, they run the gamut. I mean, you've got some that are incredibly architectural, you know, they tend to be for downtowns or for specific areas. And then you have some that, that speak about form based, but they're really not very much. And, and I, and I think that where we were headed was being sold somewhat as very form based, but it was on the not very form based end of the spectrum. So that, that is part of the answer. I will say too, though, however, that, that, that we expect to do two things. One is in module three, get into some form based expectations that we should, that we should have as a community as it relates to how things get built under this ordinance. So that could relate to the approval processes that could relate to our design review part of, of the development process. So that's part of it. And the second thing is that we expect to develop what I'm kind of calling a graphic novel version of this zoning ordinance. You know, zoning ordinance are legal documents because they must be, and they can be somewhat impenetrable, you know, to someone that isn't used to navigating a zoning ordinance. So we're discussing transitioning from the legal part of it, which we're in now, and is important, we've got to get to next summer. But sometime between now and then, transitioning to doing a graphic version of what these regulations entail, so that you can see the form aspect of it. So that's my answer, and I'm going to stick with it.
It's a very good answer. I had the same, I had the same analysis as you kind of in, as we were going through this process. It was like, this is not, you know, it just seemed like there was, it was very hybrid, form based and traditional zoning. And so I wasn't totally sure how that was going to work. And so I appreciate that answer a lot. And then my next question is around parking requirements. As it stands right now, are our parking requirements proposed to be the same as they currently exist? As it stands right now, are, are parking requirements proposed to be the same as they currently exist? Are we going to reexamine our parking requirements in some areas overall? Um, you did discuss a little bit around, you know, incentivizing um, density with reduced parking requirements, but I'm talking more like big picture overall. What is that?
If you don't mind, I might have Andrea answer this question.
Good evening, Mayor Council. For the record, Andrea tuning with planning and development. So as we've evolved over time, we have um, proposed that we do have some parking reductions in regard to some of those single family residential products. So, single family duplex, triplex, fourplex. Um, we have maintained the parking requirement for uh, multifamily structures. And then we've taken a little bit of a different approach when we look at some of our commercial structures. So previously you might have seen that it was one parking space for so many seats. And we didn't feel like that was the best way that we could evaluate those. And so you're going to see everything moved toward uh, square footage. And that's going to allow us to have different uses that are going to be able to come in and out of that over time and that we actually have a, a level set for that parking structure. And then of course, as you've reviewed in some of those incentive packages, we've offered parking reductions um, when you are producing the products that we're looking at specifically affordability or sustainability.
And then I think to follow up on that, is there any additional consideration for parking requirements along those transit corridors, those best in class transit corridors? And is there any change to those?
Council pro Tim Woodings. Um, so we have evaluated those and there, again, there are some incentives along those MX three or in those MX four packages. But if you do provide us with some affordable products, you know, we are willing to look at things a little bit differently in regard to parking. Specifically because we know that that's where our transit investment is, or we have active transportation options for individuals to utilize. So we'll be doing, we're looking at that on those specific corridors. But as we know, um, we're learning more and more as we continue throughout the process, we've been gathering community input. And so we really want to hear what our council and mayor believe, what our community believes that we can support, but we do have to really make a shift um, to focus on people and places rather than automobiles and parking stalls.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Um, so just a bit of a follow up on the parking, I guess. Um, observation that you're saying that we'd only do a parking reduction for affordability and sustainability. And it seems to me, at least originally, we were talking about doing a blanket parking reduction on high capacity transit corridors. And that um, to me, that still makes a lot of sense, that, that the investment we make as a public in that transit should be worth something. And that it shouldn't, you know, it, it could be layered with the other, but, but in its own, it should be worth something, which I think provides an incentive to have more of it, maybe.
Yeah.
Anyway, so just a little comment on that. I liked all of this uh, for the most part. I think, you know, the devil's in the details. As you know, I've done a lot of this around the state and smaller communities. And so some of the details that I'll be watching, you don't have to comment on them tonight, but um, requirements for sidewalk separation from the roadway so that active transportation is a preferred alternative. Uh, connectivity measurements, especially in infill where there's larger vacant lots that don't have good connectivity today. Uh, the R two transition, exactly how that's going to work in terms of setbacks, if it's at the alley versus at the street, those kinds of things. Um, whether or not the four units includes the ADU or is an ADU still on top of that. Uh, and then on the, the, I really like the strategic infill. I've been asking for something like that for a long time. I'm a little bit worried that we're tying it to sixty percent AMI and everything else to eighty. And that mixing those two might be confusing and maybe somewhat of a disincentive and maybe sixty becomes an even higher incentive. But I wonder if, if eighty even in the strategic infill maybe is, is worth a look. So, um, oh, and then lastly, the neighborhood marketplace. Areas again, just the devil in the details of the transition between it and the single family next to it, because there will be some, the setbacks, the you know, screening, those kinds of things. So.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Tim. Um, just to oh, sorry, uh, just to piggyback off the uh, council president's um, comments about uh, infill. So the way we've been talking about it, it almost sounds like we're talking about rental units. Um, if I'm taking that in incorrectly, can you illuminate me? I, I have a personal place in my heart, special place in my heart for infill. It's what made it possible for me to be a homeowner for a short period of time. I was in one of those, we used to call them tall skinny houses. And um, you know, I think there's probably going to be an interest in folks uh, being able to be homeowners again and having those smaller units be available for purchase, I think would be uh, exciting for folks. So I just wanted to clarify, are we looking at homeownership for some of their smaller units?
Council member, we, we are looking at both homeownership and rental. So either of those would apply to the strategic infill and the additional density that you might get in a single family. So it could be either rental or homeownership.
Uh, thank you, Kim. Uh, Tim, just a quick follow up. Um, you know, something I've I've mentioned throughout this process is um, just the fact that, you know, as we do this work, um, even though we don't speak about it overtly, we're undoing the harms of the past. And you know, historically, uh, women, women of color, folks have not done well when it comes to be becoming homeowners, having access to housing. And um, I think we're starting to see evidence of how the last couple of years have affected folks um, who already have to deal uh, with a lot of issues. And as we've learned through the pandemic, those issues have just been highlighted. And so I just want to make sure that we're mindful of that. You know, we've just, I just listened to uh, our local NPR station do an interview with Senator Melissa in Wintrow about uh, racist covenants that we had here in Boise. And it's important for our community to know that our community was structured this way intentionally. There's a reason why we're nearly ninety percent white um, in this city. It's not an accident. It was done purposefully. And I think the work that we do now um, has to be purposeful as well as we undo that harm. So just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Council Member.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Director Keen, thank you for the presentation. Uh, this is a massive effort and it's a big lift and it's something that has to be done and it's severely out of date. So thank you. I know that there's a lot more steps to go, but this is, this is a good strategy to move forward. Um, a couple of comments that I would say, um, I really like the idea of more mixed use around major quarters. I think that's really smart. It makes a lot of sense. We hear all the time about new development and not having infrastructure to support it. So it seems like we're being more deliberative about that. And I think that will help our taxpayers and our citizens. I am going to talk a little bit about parking because that's something we heard a lot about in West Boise. And um, I'm, I'm a little concerned that we're adding more ability for more density, but we are reducing parking in certain areas of the city where people are going to drive. I know that we want to give them alternatives, but the fact is there's a lot of driving that goes on in West Boise, particularly if you have a young family and you're moving, you know, kids around. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about that. Um, but I know that we'll hear more from citizens about whether they want that or not. Um, I do have a question and I got several emails about this and I'm hopeful that you can walk me through it about whether this new zoning rewrite um, removes more public comment if you have like a homeless shelter that wants to come into your area. Um, we heard a lot about that with Interfaith and I've gotten several emails that say that it does. Can you give us some clarification on that and help us understand what this would do in a situation like um, Interfaith?
Council member, yes, thank you for the question. Um, in the earlier versions of modules one and two, you might recall there was a proposal in that version that suggested that the city create a three hundred foot buffer from residential zones in order to permit a, a shelter. And the reality of that is that it would have made it impossible to do a shelter anywhere in the city. So, so that was not a workable solution. So as we were preparing to bring forward a revision to modules one and two, we initially reviewed with our uh, community advisory committee a new proposal that we were considering related to shelters. And there was a lot of discussion, Council Member, well, it's, that's where you're hearing about this from is the discussion we had with the community advisory committee. And as a result of that, we're, we are going to, to keep the regulation of shelters in this new ordinance as it is today. And, and the reason for that is this is a very important discussion related to how we regulate shelters. It's one that warrants its own conversation separate from this. And so we, we don't want to distract ourselves from the work that we're doing here related to a generational remake of the zoning ordinance that deals with the basic physical structure of the city and get sidetracked with a conversation that's a very important one around this very specific use. So Council Member, what we're proposing is that in this new ordinance, we will the regulation around shelters will be as it is today in the existing ordinance. And then later we will get to the shelter conversation. Mayor?
And yeah, just to jump in, um, to be clear, that means that a CUP is required.
Correct.
And a public process like we just went through for Interfaith is required.
That's correct. Mm-hmm.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Appreciate the clarification.
All right, as if on cue. The final thirty minutes.
Well, and it won't take me thirty minutes for this, I don't think, but I did want to mention the next steps with the zoning ordinance real quick. So we, we do have um, today, we, we have posted the the um, at five o'clock. At five o'clock today, the, the new version of the ordinance that incorporates what I just presented to you will be available online for everyone to see. So that will go online today, the new actual ordinance related to the presentation that I just gave to you. Then uh, Will, as I said, we've got a meeting this Thursday. We've got one on the eighteenth and one on the twenty-eighth, I think, are the three dates for the public forums. Council has received the notice on those in the locations. Uh, they're each, I think, an hour and a half or two hours. So we'll be at Hillcrest Library this Thursday, if you want to join us for that one. And then we'll shift after this into module three. So that during the fall, that will be the discussion which relates to the process changes and the kind of administrative aspects of the ordinance that would be uh, related to this new ordinance that we'll be presenting to council next year. So that's where we are. Uh, and I, I wanted to speak to annexation. I know this is something that council has been uh, has been uh, on your mind for a while as it relates to uh, various annexation requests that you've gotten and and wanted to just kind of give you some thoughts that we've got tonight that are emerging from requests that we've gotten from annexations and have some discussion with you around this such that we can proceed accordingly. That could include coming back to you with a policy that you might adopt, or it could be just a memo form or something to acknowledge what we're thinking about annexation, but wanted to give you, give you our thoughts because we are uh, facing some potential annexations and particularly, particularly on the south side of the city, which is uh, this map that I've got here, which I'll get into in just a minute. But, but let me say first of all, the most important thing I think for the, the city of Boise is that that we, that we are very careful about how we enable development through the actions we take and the actions being annexation and zoning of property that's currently outside the city and careful in these ways, careful number one, in the sense that we can actually afford that development because there are certain places in the city where if we, if we annex and, and enable development, it's going to require an ex, an extensive investment in public services and infrastructure. So number one, be very careful about steps we take in that direction such that we're not kind of incrementally taking these steps down a road of, of really some problematic potentially uh, financial implications for the residents of Boise. So that's one piece. The second piece is also that we be very careful about, again, this seemingly innocuous steps towards enabling relatively low density kind of suburban development further and further from the city. This is a an issue that this whole region is facing. We certainly have a clear sense that Boise should be part of the solution here and seeking to avoid the, the incredible consumption of land that can happen in a region. You, you name the region, we can talk about it, that, that's happened in most American cities. So the second piece, in addition to the financial reality of it, is not taking these steps that, that would lead us down the road of incredible problems related to some critical environmental issues, water availability, of course, being high on them. Uh, steps that we take that could in fact encourage uh, you know, you know, destruction of, 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 of nature and much higher carbon emissions and all these kinds of things that result from this. And, and becomes a, a condition where it's impossible to really serve with any kind of transportation, you know, which is the, the thing that that is so emblematic of, of most cities. So, so that's the thing, you know, we got to be careful about. And, and I wanted to, to discuss that as it relates to the south side of the city and, and some thoughts that we have about this. So this map is obviously uh, centered on the airport. And that this map happens to include Gallon at the middle of it and then showing the airport runways and including the third run, one runway, which has been planned south of Gallon and includes the area that the military currently leases from the airport. That's all at the center of it. On the kind of right side or east side of this and the light pink color is the urban renewal district, which has been designated on Iseman and up on eighty-four. Which is a location for investments related to economic development, jobs. It's in a location that has access to infrastructure, the eighty-four. It's purposeful as to where it is and why it's, you know, why it's where it is. On the right side and on, and the left side is um, southwest Boise, of course, and identifying a couple of properties in particular, the darker purple property is a development that's called locale. So you'll remember this one, which was annexed by the city years ago and, and was approved for over twenty-two hundred housing units. It's in purple here. It's under development. It's early in its development cycle. So we have issued, I think, less than three hundred permits for uh, uh, less than two hundred, I'm sorry. Uh, permits for new dwellings at locale. So it's early in locale, but that's in purple here. To the left is a property that's called Muriel Farms. You might have heard of that one. There's a owners and groups seeking to annex that into the city. So we've been looking at all this and the, the thing that we're concerned about is, and this, this is a good area to focus on as it relates to being careful about public investment. And being careful about taking steps that enable sprawling development. And, and our feeling is that really we should be sticking in this area to development that's, that already is served by infrastructure. So in this particular case, that would really be the areas essentially kind of from Orchard Street West. And then from Isenman and the urban renewal district east and then along Gallon, of course. Uh, so for instance, the uh, we would recommend against continued pursuit of the Lake Hazel extension for right now. This is a road that really is only needed to open up development south of the airport, which would be a relatively small amount of area that that we're investing a lot of public money in, in order to, to build a road through. And then, and then stick to development, as I said, where we've got existing infrastructure. And it's not just the road infrastructure. We're talking about sewer infrastructure. We're talking about a new fire department. So it's a variety of public services um, that are, that are you know, to be considered here. And so um, I will say about the, the urban renewal district. And so I will say about the, the urban renewal district and, and another thing that is unique about it, of course, as you know, and part of the reason it's where it is, is, is it has the railroad line here, which is owned by the city and present, presents a unique location for various types of workplace and, and supportive industry related to making this a place where we've got a variety of businesses. So that is an area where I think we should be paying close attention to, is there the potential that someday, as you know, legally, there is the potential to even expand the urban renewal district? Is that something we should be considering there? How is that relate to the tran, the rail corridor there? But clearly the urban renewal district and the industrial that's on that eastern side of this map towards 84 is an important zone that we should be furthering the development of and just being careful about how we serve it with infrastructure. On the west side towards where we currently have locale, that we keep development as tight to Orchard and west as we possibly can and not seek to annex for the purpose of suburban development right now, properties that are south of the airport and around Pleasant Valley and, and east of there. To speak to Muriel Farms, I will say that, that we've spent a lot of time on this over the past several months and, and visited the site, walked it, have talked with all city staff about this, of course. And over a year ago, I think it was, there was a, a submittal related to Muriel Farms, which included an analysis of what it would take to provide public services there. The city has evaluated that and feels like that is a, that is a property that, first of all, there has been a lot of effort to, to, to put in the infrastructure that would enable development on Muriel Farms. It's really surrounded by neighborhoods, as you know. So it's, we've got the dairy farm there now and, and some fields that are planted. But on the north and the west are existing neighborhoods that are already built. On the east is locale, which is under construction and early, but it will become its Muriel Farms neighbor to the east. And Muriel Farm sits between Coal and, and Maple Grove roads. So that the main street infrastructure is in place over to Lake Hazel up to Orchard. But, so we are feeling that we will bring Muriel Farms forward as an annexation and development. We think that's a good edge to the city as it relates to that growth on the south side right now down to the New York Canal. So we will be supporting that moving forward to planning and zoning sometime soon. But again, it's a, it's an instance where we've got the existing infrastructure in place or substantially in place to serve Muriel Farms. And where we would really restrict things is, as I said, east of Orchard and, and west of the industrial on, on, west of, of 84. So those are some initial comments from you. Just wanted to have a discussion with you, take any kind of questions or comments you have such that we could accordingly come back to you with potentially a policy that you adopt or, or some parameters around which we'll continue to evaluate annexations and bring them forward to you in the cases that we feel they're appropriate. So questions for me of, of that.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And Tim, I, I think that this is such a new concept and such a departure from the way that we've thought about annexation in the past. And so it might take us like a little bit of time to sort of digest it and figure it out. But the question that comes immediately to my mind is, several years ago, and I think I bring this up every few months or so, we had, it was a, it was a member of the planning department came up in front of us and said, we could, we could fulfill all of our projected residential growth by building infill. And that included like parking lots throughout the city. And so that, this reminds me of that. Like we have enough land within current city limits to take on our share of growth, which is something that you've talked about since you've been here. How do those two things kind of intersect? Like Boise taking on our share of Treasure Valley growth in a way that is urban and walkable and vibrant? And kind of, because we haven't been doing that, right? Like the Treasure Valley's been growing huge. It's sprawling. Boise, we haven't really been building that much. You know, our growth is less than 1% a year. The rest of the valley is, you know, much like twice or three times that. So just would love your thoughts on all of that.
Well, thank you for asking that question because I wouldn't want anyone here at all to leave thinking that somehow I'm suggesting that the city would, would seek to stop growing. That, that is the opposite of what I'm thinking about. And actually, the zoning presentation I just made is an example of what you've just discussed, councilmember Woodings, which is we have to do the work in the city to, to enable this kind of infill and more urban development within the already developed areas of the city. I happen to believe that you're right, that we could probably accommodate not just the city of Boise's needed population within our city limits, but maybe the whole region's population within our existing city limits. We, we want, we are starting right now, a process that I've talked with council about previously, the design of Boise project, which will really be getting to this issue specifically, which is how do we grow within our existing footprint in ways that help us accomplish the things we want as, as a city and, and help us become the community that people think will be the best version of Boise, addressing issues of housing affordability, mobility in particular, and climate adaptation in the process? And get specific about answering the question that you're raising. To what degree can we accommodate that growth within our existing footprint? And I'm feeling very strongly that we, we can, but we have to, we have to dig into that and really get deep into it. But you're putting your finger right on it as it relates to this recommendation, which is we've got to draw the line here on how much further we go or we will have lost our opportunity to turn back in and avoid the mistakes of so many places.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Tim. As everyone in this room knows, I've been a proponent of the Lake Hazel extension for a long time. More than that, I've been a proponent of an expanded industrial growth area for the city of Boise because we had turned our back on industrial growth for a great number of years. What we haven't done in the time that I've been a proponent for that is really dig into what does that mean? What kind of industrial growth? How, how should it? If, if we're going to pursue that, are there? I was struck that you didn't talk about industrial at all in your zoning presentation. How would we zone it? What are the sustainability factors? What are the other factors that would make it worthwhile? You pointed out, we have this incredible infrastructure existing with the rail, the interstate and the airport that doesn't exist anywhere else in Idaho. And if we're going to really utilize it, we should be thoughtful about how we utilize it and not just use it up for stuff that could go, you know, pretty much anywhere. So I'm very supportive of that. Want to clarify a couple of things. You talked about east of, or west of Orchard, but we have some land that's already annexed east, to the east of Orchard. So I, I think there are some devils in, devil in the details there about where the line is. Also, I think, at least for me, understanding what's existing today, how much of that land that we have in the U R D is spoken for or has application on it, how much we still have available? What is the possibility of real industrial, not just warehousing and distribution, manufacturing? And how could we envision making that happen in a way that would be a real asset to the city and not, not a detractor? So I think, I think you're absolutely on the right track that especially with residential growth, we've got a, we've got more than enough land in the existing city. I think for the kind of run-of-the-mill industrial uses, there's still land also. But I think we have this unique opportunity around the rail and the freeway and the airport that we need to continue to be really careful about. And actually, I think this presents, in my mind, an opportunity to do what we talked about a decade ago, which is think about the kinds of policies that would support the kind of industrial that we'd like to see, including sustainable closed loops and those kinds of things. So a, a lot of things going forward. And I think we're at a point where, where it makes sense to pull in, really, really think thoughtfully about what, where we want to go.
Thank you, Mary.
Actually, I, councilmember Willetts is unmuted. So councilmember Willetts, if you've got something.
Yeah, I do. Thank you. Director Keen, I had a, I had a question about Magrideria Park. I was hearing farms and I was trying to better understand what you're talking about. So if the city annexes Magrideria Park or the Magrideria site as it is on this legend, would that be subject to the open space policy that the mayor would like to do and preserving open space? How would that fit into that?
Well, councilmember, what I was referring to is Muriel Farms, which is owned by the Magrideria family and they run the dairy that's there and the farm that's there. But that is different than the Magrideria property you're speaking of. On this map, the Magrider, Muriel Farms property, which I'm speaking of that we've been evaluating, is on the New York Canal at the very southern end of Maple Grove and Coal. On this map, it's in what in North Carolina, they would call Carolina Blue. That, that is, that is the Muriel Farms property. And that's the one I'm referring to, not, not the Magrideria Farms.
That is very helpful. Thank you. I, I got my wires crossed. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just a quick comment. I think that one of the things that people like the least is being surprised that something's going to happen in a certain area that they thought maybe wouldn't or never would. And I think that that's why we always talk about a predictable development pattern. And so I love the idea of having further discussions of examining lines and policies of really trying to give expectations to our community members, what changes they might want to see in the future. And so again, I would love to have those types of discussions and trying to figure out exactly where those boundaries and the lines might be. So we know and so the public knows as well, kind of what to expect going forward.
I just have one more comment, Madam Mayor. And I think that this, my comment is this, if we choose to not develop within our city area of impact, can the county still develop within our city area of impact? And I think there's a trade-off there, right? Because if it's city of Boise development, we have standards and we have different requirements of that development. Where if the county does it, they, you know, it's often lower density. It doesn't necessarily comply with some of our, the requirements that we have around different housing types and that type of thing. So can you just speak to?
Yeah, I mean, yes, the, the, I won't speak to the legal parameters around which Ada County can enable development, you know, in our area of impact or even outside of it. But I will say this, the discussions that I've heard of, of happening in this region, certainly on the south side of the city, as it relates to these issues, are headed in the direction that I'm speaking of here. You know, this, we're not working against thing. And the, the reality is we have real constraints in this particular place in this country. I mean, the, the issues related to water availability, we're all facing. And they're, they're going to become much more acute and pronounced. And, and Ada County is, is looking at what the implications are of planned developments outside municipalities in ways that are very responsible and thinking about what, what can we actually support as a community in these locations that are outside the existing municipal jurisdictions? So, and I think our neighbor to the west and south, Kino's, having similar conversations. So your point is a good one. We have to work with our neighbors and, and with Ada County and seek to accomplish these things together. But we feel strongly that the city shouldn't take steps to, in this direction, even knowing that there's the potential that someone else could enable them, that it wouldn't be the cities, it would not be in the city and the residents of Boise's interest to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, council.
Thank you. Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we go into executive session, personnel, land acquisition, records exempt from public disclosure, pending probable litigation, communicate with risk management regarding pending probable claims, labor contract, Idaho Code 74206, one B, C, D, F, I, N, J.
Second. Give a motion, a second clerk, we call the roll. Holly Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.